Please.
Mr. President, thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to serve in town. Here at Resilience. I pray, Father, that everything is said pleasingly from your side and for our benefit. We ask it all in question.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, we'll say to pledge civility, we will be respectful of one another even when we disagree. We will direct all comments to the issues, and we will avoid personal attacks. So item number one, we've got a public hearing on ordinance number 2025-11. It is, pardon me while I get to it, so I'm going to read it correctly. It is ordinance number 2025-11, an ordinance approving the confirmation of reservation of plant capacity and cost recovery agreement between the town of Higgyard and Sherry Downs, and providing for non-codification and an effective date. Do we have any public input? All those in favor? Oppose? All right, now, this is the second reading on this ordinance. So do we have a motion to adopt ordinance number 2025-11?
Motion to adopt ordinance number 2025-11 on second final read.
Second.
All those in favor? Oppose? Item number two, ordinance number 2025-12. This is also a public hearing, and it is ordinance number 2025-12, an ordinance of the town of Higgyard, Nassau County, Florida, amending chapter one and thirty of the town code to reflect the code enforcement special magistrate, providing for conflict severability administrative correction of Scrivener's error publication and effective date. Do we have any public input?
Motion to close.
Second.
All those in favor? Oppose? Now, this is the second reading on ordinance 2025-12.
Motion to adopt 2025-12.
All those in favor? Oppose? All right, item number three. It is, and I'm going to try to scroll to it, and the other one's got twenty pages on it. It is ordinance number 2025-13, an ordinance of the town of Higgyard, Nassau County, Florida, amending chapter sixty-two of the town code to require approval of platte submittals within the town limits by an administrative authority, and to incorporate other statutory requirements pursuant to section 177.071 Florida statutes, providing for conflict severability administrative correction of Scrivener's error publication and effective date. Do we have any public comment?
Motion to close, second.
All those in favor? Oppose? Now, this is on first reading of this ordinance, number 2025-13. Do we have a motion to?
Motion to adopt ordinance 2025-13 on first reading and set the second and public hearing and final reading for December fourth, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor? Oppose?
Could I, could I just talk to you a little bit about that ordinance, just real quick?
Yes, sir.
Um, I, y'all are moving so efficiently, I, it's like, wow. Um, anyways, this ordinance, you know, I think most of you already know the Florida legislature passed a law that said no longer, you're not going to decide on plats anymore. You're not going to vote on them. It's going to be taken out of your hands. Now, your staff is. Um, you may recall, we've had some meetings in the past where plats became contentious, uh, even like preliminary plats, you know, does it have X, Y, or Z in it? So those days are going to be gone. And, and, um, anyway, so if you end up having any questions about that, let me know, but that's what you're voting on. Thanks.
Okay. All right, so now, item number four, additions or deletions to the agenda, and Lisa has two of them. Uh, item thirteen, it's a
It's a payable.
It's a payable, uh, for the Cunningham Company LLC for the 29, 250. Do we have a motion to add it to the agenda?
Motion to add.
All those in favor? Oppose? And then item fourteen, like, uh, request to add, request to add, it's a resignation letter for the zoning board.
Motion to add, second.
All those in favor? Oppose? All right, item number five. Town council to approve AECom recommendation to award contract to Lilam LLC, DPA facilities constructors to construct box hanger building at the Higgyard Air Park in the amount of $269,989.60, funding provided through FDOT Public Transportation Grant Agreement number 441751-1-94-24.
Well, good evening, members of council, the public. Uh, Bill Prang with AECom. On October eighth, we opened bids for this project. As you can see in your packet, we received, uh, four bids. Uh, the two lowest bids were pretty close to our estimate. We felt like they were both competitive. We checked all the references for Lilam. Uh, no problems with their references. They have all the appropriate contracting licenses, and we think they're suitable to construct the project. Uh, the project does fit within the budget that's been provided by FDOT grant funding, um, including the total cost, which would include our fee, the contractor's fee, all that fits within the DOT budget. So, uh, I, I know there's a comment earlier about, uh, the, the air, the, the hangar is about seventeen hundred square feet, and seventeen hundred square feet, it, we, we call it a nominal forty by forty, but in order to get forty feet wide on the inside, the outside has to be forty-three feet wide to accommodate the structural framing, so seventeen hundred and twenty square feet. The cost, uh, of metal buildings, uh, eight years ago was about forty dollars a square foot. Uh, now that's pushing ninety to a hundred or a hundred and ten. Um, I don't know if I can explain all that, except that historically, I can tell you that whole industry and the availability of steel and producers to produce the raw material and then fabricate the, the buildings, it all got messed up during COVID. And after COVID, it did come back a little. The price came back about ten to fifteen percent. It's still a relatively competitive market in Florida. Um, the, the contractor, the, excuse me, the fabricator for this, uh, building is a well-known Dean Steel Buildings, a well-known fabricator that has fabrication plants in South Georgia, several places in Florida. They fabricate and construct hangars, hangar buildings all across the state. So I say all that to say, it does look like a high price, but this is what it costs to build an aircraft hangar in Florida these days. So the DOT is aware of that. As you can see, they were able in the last couple of years to, to bump their funding up so that they would be able to cover the full cost of the project.
Well, because it's a hundred percent funded, I make the motion to approve.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Oppose?
I, I did want to ask something while Bill is here. Um, one of the things that he brought up was the fact that we have to do the clearing at the north and the south ends now that we've acquired the property. And one of the things that we had talked about was one of the homes. Um, even though we had the demolition added to the scope of work with the grant, um, one of the homes might be a home that we might want to auction when we auction the Mickelson Estate House. Um, so we probably need to think about getting that ready. And I know Christian's on the line and can hear me, um, some assistance there so we can get started with that so that he can move forward with, um, the bidding and getting that project done.
Well, what's the timeframe of wanting to do the hangar? I mean, is, are we going to be able to do?
It's separate from this. This is a different ground.
Yeah, and I, I'm not the procedural guy here, but, but what Lisa brought up is separate from the hangar. This hangar project is ready to go, um, as soon as the council approves, assuming you will approve tonight. We'll make contact with this contractor tomorrow. We'll start the process of getting contracts, bonds, and insurance. I would say, uh, you know, holidays are always slow down construction. We'll probably have a notice to proceed in, uh, in December. And right now, the quotes for metal building fabrication is twelve to sixteen weeks. So that, that means it takes, uh, three to four months to get a metal building approved, fabricated, and delivered to the job site. So typically what happens is in the last month before the building gets delivered, the contractor will come, build the concrete slab, and occupy the site. Usually, the first two months of a project like this is just office work, no actual disturbance on the site. So you've already contracted with AECom to provide inspection on the project. We'll be reviewing all the contractor's submittals. I expect that'll start in the December timeframe. But onsite construction is probably more like spring. And if, if you want to vote on that, I'll stay at the podium to answer the other part of Lisa's question about clearing.
We already voted.
Have you voted on it?
Yeah, that's why I brought this up.
Like I said, I'm not a procedures guy. I completely missed the vote.
This was totally separate. I just wanted, since you were here, and considering questions about your timeframe moving forward.
So on, on the clearing project, you have trees, some on your property, uh, some off property. Um, the, the plan for the trees that are on your property is to remove them. They are, they are at and near the end of both runways on the north and south. The DOT has noted in their annual inspection for a couple of years, hey, you've got some trees. Looks like they're getting too tall. So we're, nothing is a violation, but we're on notice to deal with the problem before it becomes a problem. Um, so since you've completed the acquisition on the north, the plan is to remove all of the tallest trees, most of them are pines. And there's a, uh, a couple acres on the south end where you bought property a couple of years ago, uh, from the, the backside, if you will, of the church parcel. So we'll do some clearing in the north and the south. We're about halfway through that design project, and we paused our work waiting to see what was going to happen with demolition of the three homes that were recently acquired on the north. So I, I told Lisa, I'm ready within, say, sixty days. If you can figure out whether you're going to auction and have someone relocate one of the homes, I assume if that doesn't pan out, it would come back and be a demolition item in our clearing contract. That project is also DOT funded at a hundred percent. I don't have those dollar values off the top of my head, but I would expect you'll see me back here in January, February, talking to you about, um, removal of structures and removal of trees in the, on both ends of the runway.
Did you have anything to add to that, counselor?
No.
Okay.
Is that the camera?
Yes.
Hey, Christian, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good.
It's always good to see you.
Yeah.
All right.
So you'll see me again.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, item number six, town council to consider ordinance number 2025-14. This is the first reading, uh, 2025-14, an ordinance relating to public right of way or alley making findings vacating public right of way or alley within surrounded by block ninety-three, platte of the west portion of Higgyard within town of Higgyard, Florida, authorizing recording of a certified copy of this ordinance, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Ms. Wallace, you have something to add or?
Uh, this has been before the zoning board already, and it comes with their recommendation for approval. Applicant has met all of our requirements.
Motion to adopt first reading, set the public hearing and final reading for December fourth, second.
All right, all those in favor? Oppose? All right, item number seven is ordinance number 2025-15, an ordinance relating to public right of way or alley making findings vacating a block of public right of way known as West Eighth Avenue, which falls between Georgia Street and Virginia Street, platte of the west portion of Higgyard within town of Higgyard, Florida, authorizing recording of a certified copy of this ordinance, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Ms. Wallace?
This as well has been through the zoning board. When this item came before you for a pre-application, um, you made the suggestion to the applicant that they would need to leave a utility easement. They have left a utility easement in this right of way. It's in the south thirty feet of the right of way, which was the preference of, um, the Public Works Department because it's as far as it can be from their current dwelling unit and driveway of the applicant. And they met all requirements set before them, and it comes as a recommendation from the zoning board.
Motion to approve.
And this is first reading for, uh, public hearing and final reading on December fourth. So we got a motion in a second. All those in favor? Oppose? All right, item number eight, town council approval of the minutes for October sixteenth, 2025, regular meeting and October twenty-third, 2025 workshop.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor? Oppose? Item nine, town council approval of AECom payable through October tenth, 2025, project name, design and construct new box hanger at the Higgyard Airport in the amount of $1,100.
Motion to approve, second.
All those in favor? Oppose? Item number ten, town council approval of CPH Consulting LLC, payable through October seventeenth, 2025, project name, eight-inch parallel water main extension to FAA facility in the amount of eighty, eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Motion to approve, second.
All those in favor? Oppose? Item number eleven, town council approval of Nassau County Public Library System donation for fiscal year 2025, 2026, to, to friends of the Higgyard Branch Library in the amount of eight thousand dollars. All those in favor? Oppose? Item number twelve, town council approval of Suez Annual Payment Number Five of Five, payable through October first, 2025, project name, Advanced Metering Infrastructure, or AMI, in the amount of one hundred, nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Motion to approve, second.
All those in favor? Oppose?
And that's it?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Yep. All right, item number thirteen, which is the payable that was added. It's from item number one. This is from, um, the call share agreement with, uh, ordinance 2025-11, and it's a twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-dollar payment.
And all of it was paid by the developer.
That's the Cunningham. Motion to approve, second.
All those in favor? Oppose? All right, item number fourteen, this is, uh, to accept the resignation of Josetta Lawson from the zoning board.
Second.
All those in favor? Oppose? Public comments. Do we have anybody wanting to speak? Yes, sir, come on up. You got three minutes. Name and address.
Do I get a minute per mile that I drove up here? I'm Doug Conkey, uh, with the St. John's River Water Management District, seven, 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 five, Bay Meadows Way, Jacksonville, Florida, three, two, two, five, six. Just wanted to say it's great to be up here, beautiful night with the moon coming out. Uh, Sunday, we gained an hour of sleep, but we lost a day watering. That's when the, when the clocks, uh, go back. That means we only need to, with being cooler, things starting to go dormant, we only really need to water once a, a week. So if you have any, uh, utility billouts or notices to residents to kind of help remind them that the change has been, it's probably been in the press and so forth, but your support and just letting the folks know that, uh, less water is needed over the winter months. And also, we now have initiated a rebate program for conservation items inside the house, outside of irrigation. I'll send Lisa the information to share with you, and if you have any organizations, HOAs, uh, or yourself who want to take part in that, to help pay, uh, for any, uh, opportunities to upgrade and, uh, conserve some water, that'd be fantastic. I'm always a big fan of using other people's money, and we have some money. So just wanted to say thank you and I wish you a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
You get thirty seconds.
Huh?
No, nothing, nothing.
I won't need much more than that. Uh, Harold Fryt Jr., three, seven, three, two, eight, West Seventh Street. I just wanted to thank Josetta for her service on the planning board, twenty-plus years. Um, I've sat next to her for the last year. That might be. Um, I've learned a few things from her over the last year. Um, she always, from the time that I started serving, she's always served with grace and professionalism. She hasn't always said a whole lot, but whatever she did speak, she was very articulate, eloquent, and, uh, was always a calming force to the rest of the board. And I truly appreciate the opportunity to work with her and to sit with, next to her, and I wish her all the luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Skip. Any, what else from the public? All right, uh, Councilman Hunter.
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Wallace.
Thank you, Josetta, for your service to the town. You're going to be missed, but, you know, you've earned it, and you've done well for our town. And Doug, I thank you for always coming to Hillier. You know, you're one of the few people that represents an outside jurisdiction, but you do come, and you do keep us aware of what's going on in the program for available, and I do thank you. And I hope the St. John's water realizes what I asked that they have to be. So I.
All right, Councilman Michaels.
Uh, yes, uh, I got this from Dave this afternoon. He's got a hundred and twenty-five, uh, kids in volleyball, which is a big increase. We've got, uh, fourteen girls teams that start on Saturday morning. We have a hundred and twenty-three in soccer. We're in our second week of games. We've got eighteen soccer teams. Gymnastics is going on in the town gym twice a week, and we're finalizing quotes for upgrades in North Oxford Park and upgrade those. We're waiting on delivery date for new playground equipment in North Oxford.
Did you have anything? All right, uh, Councilman Pickett.
I'll just echo what Jared said. Thank you for coming. I know you make a long trip. Do you have anything to do with the, uh, Rodman Dam being done away with?
Actually. We asked that question, uh, but because we would be the permitting agency, we are not allowed to take a position on something that we would be permitting. So, so when you, that, I mean, it's obviously a hot topic for or against. You know, it's a topic that's been ongoing for fifty years. Uh, they're actually drawing it down. This is one of those years they're drawing it down. Uh, so that always brings up the topic again, but because we would be the permitting agency, we are not allowed to take a position.
That's understandable. But that's Silver Springs. That's a natural aquifer, the biggest one in Florida, right? It runs through that.
It is. It is one of the biggest ones in, and, and down in the central part of our district. The springs are a hot topic, protecting the springs, recharging the springs. Uh, you'll probably learn more about a project called Water First. You've heard of the Black Creek Project that's now wrapping up down in, to address some what they call minimum flows and levels, which are the, Aquifer has spoken to us down in the Keystone area that, uh, it needs to be recharged, and that's, that project was. This project is similar, but bigger by a cost of factor of ten. Uh, so that means it starts with a B.
Yeah.
And it's going to take water from Jacksonville, approximately forty MGD of, uh, reuse water, reclaimed water, and pipe it, uh, probably to a thousand-acre filtration system somewhere around McLennie. Reclaim it and continues out to recharge area to be determined over by Lake City to recharge because of this, uh, uh, Sooney River, Low Extraction, Extraction River, Lower Santa Fe River, MFLs are still problematic, and that impacts your cup, uh, and cups throughout the, uh, the lower ba, uh, water basin in the North Florida Water Resource Plan. You probably recently passed the, your, uh, facility work plan for water. You know, for years, water has never really been a big deal, but it's now a big deal, and the aquifer is now really manifesting itself. So when you have comp plans, for example, if you had a large comp plan, a major comp plan, we would be commenting and looking for comments to say, where are you getting the water to service? The homes, the commercial, whatever the case may be, because we're at that point. You know, people are getting shortened. McLennie's under shortened, uh, consumptive use permit for Indian Beach. Uh, this impacts St. John's, JEA, Clay County. Uh, so this is a big deal, and that's an awful lot of water.
Right.
Um, so it's just something that, uh, it's being dealt with. It's an expensive, uh, issue to deal with. Uh, but growth is coming. Uh, it's something that we're not going to be able to stop, so we have to put best practices in place.
How much of that's got to do with the fact that they're doing away with wetlands?
Well, it's, uh, you can have wetlands. It's just a matter of where we, we want to protect the areas out of the recharge areas. Uh, and that's why the, in a wet, in the recharge areas where the aquifer is closest to the surface, so that will perk down there very quickly. Um, but if you watched our board meetings, and, and they're all archived, and you watched the very beginning, the hydrology report, uh, it gives you the health, uh, tells you all about the aquifer and all throughout the district, tells you that the state of the springs, tells you, uh, state of the key lakes, Lake Brooklyn, you know, uh, uh, Lake Brooklyn down in Keystone is probably lost, uh, because our project still is not fully online, and it's been a dry summer, longer, much longer than coming out of the spring. It's been very dry. It's probably lost five or six feet. So all these people, you know, we talked about this project, and people are going, making phone calls, where's my water and where's my lake? And we've always said, Mother Nature dictates whether we get water or not because, uh, Black Creek is low, and it's below the level of flow that would allow us to draw by permit and pipe seventeen miles south to there. So it's been a challenging month, uh, which means it's challenging. But also, we're, uh, you're impacted by, by your area right here. You're close to Georgia. So the aquifer is huge and goes up into Georgia and all the way up to South Carolina. So whatever they do, also the number of strides, and they have different permitting, uh, policies up there.
Why are they letting Nestle and Zephyr Hills keep drawing more and more water down? How, how much, how much is that actually impacting all of the water that they're drawing out, out for? Plastic bottled water.
And where are they located?
Zephyr Hills is in Zephyr Hills.
Is that in Georgia?
No, Florida. Down, uh, around Tampa.
Tampa, uh?
And I think Nestle just, they just got approval to put in a big Nestle plant down there somewhere, too. Another one drawing a bunch more water.
Uh, if they're, if they, they're under the Southwest Florida Water Management District, and I know they're challenged for water over there, uh, I think they actually have a desalination plant. Uh, I'll have to check on that one. But like, we have one in, uh, Clay County. It's called Niagara. And people are saying, how come you're giving them a consumptive use permit? Well, they didn't get one from us. They are buying their water from Clay County Utility, which had, uh, space in their consumptive use permit. So I explained to, think of it as a, a really big home, and they're buying a lot of water. Uh, and, but, so there's no extra consumptive use permit. So everything going in is going to be closely watched, and the reason I, I, uh, want to bring it to you, because you probably see growth coming. And you know, if you watch what's coming down I-ten and working its way into Baker, it's kind of all coming out this way. Uh, so at, at some point in time, you're going to start having substantial growth out here. Uh, so I'll just talk to you offline. I'd just be curious to know where you are in your capacity for your wastewater treatment plant and your consumptive use permit. Because I know, uh, McLennie's backs are against the wall, and they got growth knocking on their door. And so growth is coming, and this, it's, it's, it's a challenging, uh, time.
Thank you. Council President Sam.
I'd hate to see Josetta go also. Uh, be a lot more knowledge going off the zoning board that's been there. She's been an asset to the town for a long time, so I hate to see her go also. And she was a calming voice for Skip I just heard, so that's definitely something we need to look at for her replacement, is a calming voice for Skip to sit beside him. So whoever that might be, keep that in mind, Lee.
Tell me today.
And thank you for coming, Doug.
Got it, sir. Um, yeah, I, I want to. One more thing, okay?
I want to say that I apologize for not being here. I know that that was a big deal for the kids at the school and seeing those pictures, and, and the funny thing was, I keep trying to think of her name, uh, that was sitting here. It was, uh, uh, what's her last name?
It's Alma Menos.
No, it's Mike, Mike, from the, from the.
Oh, you're talking about the Payne boy that was knocked.
She's not sitting right here?
She was sitting beside Knox.
Okay, so she, she did have somebody here for her. Okay, that's, that was why I was asking. Okay, that's that was why I was asking. I ran into I ran into to him, and he was telling me how they all couldn't be here for all different reasons. I said, well, where did she sit at? He said, I think second from the end. I said, well, even worse than that, I wasn't here for her either. Shit, that's where she sat at. Anyway, but I want to apologize for not being here, and it looked like it was a fun time. I was out of town, so I did want to say that.
All right, then one more thing?
No, one more.
I do want to echo the sentiments for Josetta resigning. Here, in the last couple of months, we've lost some valuable knowledge on the zoning board, and it's going to be hard to replace. And, you know, I tried to talk to Josetta this weekend because she had confided in me that what she was, what her plans were, and but, you know, I wish, I wish she wouldn't have, but I understand. The other thing I have is... Yeah. The other thing that I have is this weekend, Saturday, we've got the Veterans Appreciation Event, starts at 9 o'clock. Get here a little early for some donuts, but it starts at 9:00, and then we'll have lunch at around 11:30. We've got some good speakers. From what I understand, Aaron Bean is going to be here to speak, so he always, he always is, does a good speech, and he's always amusing. So that's all I've got. We've already heard from Gabe. Cory's not here. Ms. Purvis.
I just have a couple of things. We opened the bids today on the capital project for the Manhold 167 and 170. Unfortunately, out of the four plan holders, it was only one bid turned in by TB Landmark, and it was slightly over our budget. And Tim was going to call the company owner to talk to him about if there was any way we could reduce the cost, if there was anything we could cut. He wasn't sure, but he was going to try. The next thing is on October 28, I had the legislative appropriations documents submitted for the Senate and House forms for our request this year. John took care of those for me, and we submitted them, like I said, a few days early. And when he originally sent them, I remember what Senator Yarborough had said about the state wasn't willing to give us 100% state grant funding, and so I had him redo it and add in the planning and the design phases, which shows the town paying the 50% of both of them so that it would show that we do have funding in this project. Instead of just showing the construction project portion, I had him show the entire project so that hopefully that will help. I don't know if it will, but...
It should. Remind me again, remind me again when the day on the hill is, in January?
It's January 20...
It's not on a Thursday, or it's not on a meeting Thursday?
I have it a few meetings back.
22nd, Thursday, the 22nd.
Thursday, the 22nd. So that is not a, so the first is a Thursday? Are we going to?
Yeah, the 15th. No, we're going to have to talk about that because if we don't have any public hearings scheduled, and I know we do the 15th, but not the first, we might could skip over the first meeting of the month and just have the workshop the next week, like we always do, and then on the 15th, take care of our organization since we don't have any actual O's swearing in or anything. And I don't foresee, neither does, me and Liam went through the public hearing stuff today, and the only one that we foresee is on the 15th of January, so we might could just get away with skipping that meeting.
Okay.
And just meeting long enough to approve payables, maybe the next day or that month or something.
You get all the payables for the end, middle of December, the...
Just if there's capital.
Well, if we have to set a meeting, do it the workshop night.
That's just if we have capital.
If we have something we have to do.
Council President Sims could just come by at some point and sign them, we'll still have them ready for that Tuesday prior.
Okay. Ms. Wallace, I'm sorry, you were here for, or you've been working closely with Cory and Public Works. Did you have anything for Public Works?
Or land use.
Yeah, do we need to add to you anything?
I think we do. That's what I was thinking.
They're making some improvements with some drainage improvements. The west side of town, our two guys have been working on that. Lots of progress on the Old Town Hall Capital Project. All I can say is I'm really sorry, and guy's going to have to answer for what's happened down there. The technology is the major expense there, and we're waiting on it to catch up. As soon as the technology is ready to go, he'll start moving computers, and we can have staff down there. They hung our sign today on the front of the building, come do a tour. It's still sparse in there, it'll it'll fill up, and we fill up and move our files.
And I apologize, I still, I forgot again about the file cabinets, but if you will text me in the morning, I will make sure that I will check.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And for land use, we have a few things that'll be on your workshop agenda. It'll be a joint workshop. There's a major modification to the Hall and Walt pud, it'll have to go back through ordinance process, we'll be talking about that next week. And then we have three resumes for, to fill two seats on the zoning board, and today was the deadline for those to be turned in. So we have three applicants for that, and they will be with us next Thursday for you to look over the resumes, ask any questions that you might have.
Can I speak about commercial growth coming to town, please?
Commercial growth coming to town. Last night at the zoning board, zoning board approved site plan for McDonald's at the red light, and they will be moving into the building permit process of their project. And if they can keep on schedule, we will have french fries by May, which is the goal. O'Reilly's at the caution light picked up their building permit today, so their site plan has been approved, and their building permits have been issued. Our pre-construction meeting with them is next Wednesday. Greenbrier has begun their off-site construction of their force main. They were hoping to have that completed by Christmas. They've had a little bit of a hiccup right there on 108 and Kingsbury Highway as they go past our federal partner there, and we're we're helping them work through that. And then as soon as they get their HOA documents, finish their legal review on their HOA documents, we'll be able to sign off on their preliminary plat, and they'll be able to start onsite construction as well. At Greenbrier, their current plan, they have two builders, and they're planning to build 40 homes per builder per year. And so they're they're talking about 80 homes a year and and be kicking that off in the first or second quarter of next year when it comes to onsite infrastructure, and then homes come after onsite infrastructure. But if you've driven to Winn-Dixie, you already know what they're doing. They set their force main and their wet well this past week on that property, and it was quite an undertaking. Our guys got to go out and watch them do part of that. It was quite a neat thing. Lots happening.
One one question for you.
Yes, sir.
Are we holding up any commercial eating establishments from coming to Hilliard right now that you know of?
No, sir.
I mean, no breakfast establishments that have tried to come?
No, sir.
We haven't signed off on?
Not inside the town limits.
I saw a few comments online, and I just want to make sure for public record that we're not holding back any growth in Hilliard right now.
No, sir.
For commercial or residential.
I can't speak for any parts of unincorporated Hilliard. I can speak for incorporated Hilliard, and if they've called me, they're in process. But there's no other food in process at this time.
I just wanted to...
And if you want to take a drive down Oxford, they pulled permits for the fourth building for that apartment complex. It's been in process for a couple of years, where there'll be 19 rental units at Oxford and 7th, and they're in construction of those structures now.
Yeah, I saw they have the one building up.
I think it's dried in, it's pretty close to rough end.
It's not not level yet, but yeah, they have a, there is a building on site.
Yes, sir.
That it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two sets of duplexes on 5th Street, which is what you just did, the share agreement. Those building permits are back there in review right now, too. So we're moving.
All right, counselor.
Nothing for me, mayor, thank you.
Would you do a adjournment?